Call to order the policy subcommittee meeting, roll call please.
Member Dugan?
Here, present, excuse me.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Okay, so tonight, on the agenda for the subcommittee is to talk about the screening procedures policy. So, I've done a little bit of digging on this and talking to Dorothy Presser, she, her and I took a look at it. For those of you that don't know, Dorothy was essentially contracted to look at policies with us and kind of help us along with those things. So Dorothy had a few suggestions, I'll run those by you and then I guess we can hear from the committee and kind of go from there and see what we want to do. So first, Dorothy's first suggestion would be that this is more procedure than it is policy. So she was a little concerned about that, not that all the pieces wouldn't fit in the policy, she thinks some pieces could, but for the most part, a lot of it's procedure. She was a little concerned that some of it seemed to counter a little bit with ed reform. For example, the ability of the superintendent to hire and manage administrative staff. You know, waiting till September for that is a little troublesome according to Dorothy for some of the things. And just in the coding policy itself, so the fact that it's actually Section K, so it's filed under Section KCB slash A. Section K in our policy manual is actually community relations and most of it deals with the community relations section. So KCB is community involvement decision-making, so some of the screening procedures involve that, but some of them don't. And then I think one of the other things was that some of these things could fit into Section G, which is in our policy. Section G is where, within the, you know, the school committee policy, that's where we talk about staff hiring, professional staff hiring, administrative hiring, things of that nature. So, you know, if it's the subcommittee's desire to have some of those things moved to Section G in the screening procedure policy, we could do that. So, you know, deciding the future of this is a couple of elements that we need to look at. You know, removing some of the things that are strictly, you know, procedure, which is what we've done, you know, I get I'm fairly new at this, but I guess historically that's what we've done, removing things from the policy manual that are procedures. You know, pieces of this that are that, and then, you know, taking a look at it and seeing what parts we maybe want to move to Section G rather than where it is now in KCB A. So that's kind of where we're at. I don't know if anyone from the committee wanted to comment on their concerns or comments on this and then we can talk where we want to go from there. Uh, Member Capola.
Okay, I was on the committee when somebody presented this, you know, back in 2014, you know, for, and the reason was lots of times they wouldn't have a screening committee or the screening committee would have so many people on it that it more was to corral it in into a reasonable amount, number, as well as to make sure that it's a fair amount of people. Like, you know, to make sure that there were parents on the committee, that there were school committee people on the committee, that the teachers were represented, that somebody from the community was represented, and the administrators. And to have, you know, I noticed that in here said something about, about how many to have on a committee, you know, so it says from seven to nine members is what the committee size should be. And the other big thing that was on there was a lot of people who worked within the system felt as though they weren't given a chance for interviews and I'm not, or people who lived in the community, so that was added on also to make sure that people who lived in the community and people who worked here had a chance to be, have an interview process. So, you know, if you're putting a policy together, myself, I feel is those things, those are important things and fair things and people who would apply for jobs because my understanding is we're hearing that, you know, people don't feel like they would have a fair interview. And so at some point, we definitely should write a policy that, that we can follow and we don't go off track on it.
Okay, thank you. Talk to Magnolia.
Yeah, so I, I think there's a number of things that I think are troublesome about this specifically. It doesn't say what types of positions and I, I think that the onerousness of a, three school committee members being on every single hiring committee for every single position and every single building in the entire system is just so unrealistic. We're expecting this policy to be violated by having that as a requirement. It would be one thing if the policy set out for positions above a certain size, so maybe any supervisory positions to require school committee members or any positions that are in one specific bargaining unit or in another one. But as I see the way the policy is written now, it is absolutely unenforceable. So I, I think that given the nebulousness with which it was written with regards to what types of positions we're talking about here, I, I think that I would, as a member of this policy committee, recommend that we kind of go back to the drawing board with it, clarify a lot of things, and, and I think to Donna's point, the courtesy of an interview when someone meets job qualifications is very different than the courtesy of an interview when someone doesn't meet basic job qualifications. And perhaps the policy needs to spell out, I know because I've been on many hiring committees at the college, that a lot of times folks will apply for jobs for which they don't meet even the basic minimums. And then, you know, they're a graduate of the college and so they think that that should guarantee them an interview or something like that. And it's always really hard to explain that to folks. But depending on what the position is, right, there might be leeway, there might not. So I just, I see too many holes in this to kind of clarify those things. So I, I just think it needs to be shorter, number one. This is 20 items long, yeah, that's a lot. And I think it needs to be much more specific about for whom and under what circumstances we are recommending this great diverse committee. And I think we also need to be clear about the expectations of who will be guaranteed interviews if we're talking about meeting minimum qualifications or just residency requirements. Those things should be spelled out in the policy so that there is no wiggle room for what Donna is talking about.
Absolutely. Member Gaetley.
Well, first of all, in this policy, manual, or policy, number three, postings approved by the school committee, I know for a fact that the principal posting had been changed and a new posting was put in, did not come before the committee. On number six, when five or more qualified applicants have submitted complete formal applications, the principal director will organize a screening committee. Right there it states that they are qualified, so they had to meet the criteria that was listed in the posting to even get that possible interview. Maybe Dr. Magnolia is correct, maybe somewhere in here it didn't say that they had to be qualified to meet that and if they didn't, then we need to take it out. That's what bothers me about this is that when this policy wasn't adhered to with as large as it is, we have several people that are, who knows, they're in principalships right now in elementary schools. And there are people that were qualified, that applied for jobs, that didn't get put in because they changed the posting. So it's all messed up to me. So that's why this is so important to get this right, to make sure we include Lynn people, to make sure that Lynn teachers that are working their butts off and getting their master's degree and following all the things, all the steps that they had been told by previous administrations, this is what you need to be able to move ahead. And when they meet all those steps, they should be able to be given at least an interview. So I, I really think we need to keep those things, we need to keep that in mind, that we're dealing with a loving, hardworking community of teachers that are working hard and they're looking to move up so they can take care of whole buildings, take care of other tasks, and that's how I feel about this. It needs to keep some of this stuff, almost of it. Thank you.
Yeah, Member Magnolia.
So I'd like to move to table this policy until we can have suggested revisions.
Okay, I would second that. Roll call.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Okay. So with that being the only thing on the agenda, I guess we would need...
I'd like to move to adjourn.
Second. Roll call.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Good evening, we're going to start the open mic session. The open mic session is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern to the school committee. The sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least 18 years of age or enrolled in high school in Lynn Public Schools District and having discussed their views with a student government representative. The chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if he or she feels that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. The sessions will promptly commence 15 minutes prior to the start of the regular school committee meeting. And first on the list, we have Rich Germano, if you could please come up and state your name and address.
Hello?
Hello, good to be here.
My name's Rich Germano, I'm president for Local 1736. I represent clerical, cafeteria, custodial, maintenance. There is a job that is on the agenda tonight for benefits, what was, which was done for our clerks from, I've been here from 1998 till current and I believe our clerks could handle it, the job has grown. I was never made aware of this till recently, that these jobs are going to be changed and taken out of our unions. It was never bargained with me, any of this. And in all due fairness, I, I asked for some time to at least try to straighten this out. There's still a lot to it we don't know about. I would ask to give me a short period of time to try to settle this with the school, school committee and department, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
Any other, anyone else wishing to speak at open mic? Anyone wishing to speak at open mic? One more call for open mic, we will close open mic and the meeting starts at 7:00 PM, thank you. Call to order, the 13th regular meeting of the school committee, roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gaetley?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Member Peña?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
All please rise, first look to the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for a moment of silence, memory of David Hegan, transportation manager, passed away August 1st, 2022. Thank you. All right, first item are the minutes from the ninth special meeting on August 29th, 2022.
Make a motion that we approve the ninth special meeting on August 29, 2022.
Second. Roll call please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gaetley?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
The first item here is the superintendent search process. We were expecting to be joined by Mr. Kuchar, so we will, I'm sure, following up with them. But we can start the discussion. We want, we sent out a timeline to the school committee just to give everybody a sense of what we're hoping to accomplish in the fall. And one of the, one of the fortunate aspects of the situation we're in is that we have some time to find the next superintendent, thanks to the timing of the transition and the position we're in with Superintendent Rosario to step in. So we have this year and we think to best use that to advantage getting started with the, with the logistics of getting the posting out and empowering MASC to do the focus groups and listening sessions that we think are going to inform the process while the posting is out and available and candidates are applying because there's not, there's not so much for us to do in that search phase while we're waiting because we got to give the, the posting time to be out there to get the candidates. So that is the goal there and then to, to give us the ability to wrap up the search and, and this is, you know, per Glenn's, Kuchar's recommendation, so that if we're not satisfied at the end of this search timeline that we've let out, we have, we have more time in the spring to rectify that. But even still, we get out ahead of the market to let everyone know what we are looking for. So we distributed that timeline. We sent a draft posting to the, the school committee on August 30th and had asked for folks to share any feedback. We sent a red line, tracked changes to the previous posting so, so people could see the changes we made, broadly using the previous posting as a, as a foundation, but bringing in some additional information, particularly the, the, referring specifically to the vision of values that we've established and also looking at other postings from other districts. And so that, my team worked on that and they worked with Mr. Kuchar from MASC and we have had the opportunity to have some questions and discussion with, with some of the members. Appreciate all those folks for those conversations. And then we are hoping to be able to settle on a posting so that we can post that and then move forward with that aspect of the process. So wanted to open it up to the committee. Any questions? Member Magnolia.
I, I think that the posting looks great. The only thing I wondered if we should add in the about Lynn Public Schools is just how robust our early college program is, just one line about that, especially because the, the fact that our Frederick Douglass Early College High School is the only one in the state of Massachusetts operating on a college campus means that we're of course not going to have a candidate who has experience in that. But understanding the scope of the early college program as it operates in Lynn is, I think, important for somebody to know out of the gate.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a great point. Member Castellanos?
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson, for providing that to, on 8:30, it was helpful to kind of have everything back in front of us. From, I know from the last experience, when we were looking for Dr. Tuttwiler, it's, it's very helpful to have it laid out where you, your team had, have laid it out in front of us. My, my, I have a two-fold question around the procedures and the process around the participants. I know the school committee around the week of November, like that, towards the end will have our chance to, I guess, weigh in on the top two. Is that, is that how it would be or would it be a recommendation of this specific committee to move forward with the candidate?
No, it would be the finalists and typically it's, it's more than two. It would be three to five, I think. We ended up with two last time because finalists dropped out. I mean, I, I think that's why you target three to five because that happens. But that would, that, that, that's how that would work. And of course, the reasoning for that is that the full committee can't do the screening or traditionally does not do the screening. And if we have more than two members on the search committee, then it's, triggers certain requirements that we have decided to, to set up a process where we could do a screening committee by this search committee. A lot of applicants, we, we would, I think, lose out on applicants if people had to go straight to the public forum of the school committee. And so the search committee is in place to screen those, but fully expecting the decision itself to come from the school committee. So to, to send a certain number of finalists so that the school committee has that final decision. Member Capola, yeah?
Just wondering why the, it was reduced to 12 years for experience, school administration and teaching. We had, it was 15 before, so I'm just wondering what the specific reason might have been for that.
I think the, the only thinking there is that if there was someone who had 14 years of experience that, that felt like they were qualified and the, and the search committee felt like they were qualified, then they would be able to apply. That was the thinking.
Okay, now, should, should there be a minimum of so many years of administrative? I mean, if somebody is, you know, 11 years in teaching and one year in administrative job, should there be more than one year? I mean, it could, somebody could come before us with that.
Right. I think, we can certainly consider it. I think generally the, that would, that a person with only one year of administrative experience would be unlikely to reach us, given the, what we're looking for. Obviously, someone who is, meets all the minimum qualifications, not necessarily someone that's going to become a finalist. But if, if, I, I don't, I don't know what the right number is, I think that's the trade-off of using those cutoffs. But if, if, if we, if we felt like there was the right number in terms of years of administrative experience, I think we could add that. Yeah, Member Castellanos?
The, the piece about, I think it's in between September 19th and October 7th in the timeline, the focus groups conduct, that are going to be conducted inland with stakeholders. Are we, are members of the school committee who are not on this committee able to join those focus groups? Is my first question. Second question is how are we going to develop the, the criteria to be in this process? Or what are the focus groups going to look like in terms of stakeholders and who we reach out to to be part of that process?
Yeah, so there's going to be, I believe, both focus groups and listening sessions that are like open to the public. And so I, I think definitely the listening sessions, the school committee could go to. The focus groups will be with identified stakeholders and I think part of the thinking there is you might get folks that are more willing to share the, the kind of feedback we're looking to get if, depending on who's in the room, you know, if you had, you, you want to give the sort of frontline employees a chance to, to, to share what they're looking for in a, in a non-public setting essentially, maybe parents. So I think that will be, that's the, I think that's the goal there. And MASC will be working with us to establish those and so I, I'm sure that MASC would be very open to feedback about particular focus groups that we'd like them to schedule. And that, and that's how we did it last time, if you recall, and MASC led those, yeah. Member Capola?
I'm, I'm still confused on focus groups. The last time it was the, after the finalists were chosen, then there were focus groups that came in and interviewed the finalists. And we had them a number of nights. So, and if, you know, I understand, you know, we're about two school committee members because a lot of people who applied don't want to come out in public and say that they're applying for the job and then, you know, have, you know, if they work for another district, that would be a problem for them, you know, in the end. So, but I don't, I don't remember focus groups before that point. I remember them afterwards, people asking me questions, so.
Yeah, so we, I mean, we can, we can, we definitely, we are working with MASC because we felt, felt like we liked the, the process last time. And so I think aspects of the process that we felt good about last time, we'll look to replicate. So, yeah, that, and, and, you know, that, that's, that's part of the goal of this update is to get people's feedback on the, on the timeline here. So, you know, that, that sounds, that sounds good.
Does it quite answer my question? I don't know, what are those focus groups, I mean, are they, they, they would just be meeting with the committee? To give their input on what they're looking for?
The focus groups in September would be meeting with MASC to give input on what we're looking for. I think if you're, it, it sounds like you're talking about interviews with the finalists that you said.
Yeah, that's, that's after that, but I, I don't really remember that last time, focus groups coming in and meeting.
So the focus groups conducted with Lynn, inland with stakeholders?
Yes.
Yeah, so those are, those are prior to having identified the candidates?
Yes, but I don't remember that part of it. So if that's new, that's fine, I mean, I, it.
I, I mean, I remember seeing the, the surveys. I, I believe that we had done like listening sessions, so maybe it's just a nomenclatory thing.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, Member Castellanos?
Could you kind of walk me through what orientation is going to look like for the committee members? I know we're, we're looking for interview preparation and, you know, what are we going to do to just get those folks who haven't been part of something like this prepared?
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's a great question. I think obviously we want to lay some ground rules about confidentiality and sort of the legal requirements to make sure we do everything we, we want to accomplish from a compliance perspective. I would imagine that Glenn, I mean, you, you've all met Glenn, he's, he has a lot of tips. So I, I imagine he would have some do's and don'ts and some advice and, you know, make sure that people are feeling comfortable and have the opportunity to have their, their questions answered. It's, it's, you know, it's a fairly significant time commitment. So we certainly want folks to feel like they're prepared. Member Gaetley?
Under qualifications, I really, I see license as a superintendent or eligible for licensure. I, I don't think that eligibility for licensure should be there, they should have it. If they're applying, they should have it.
Yeah, I thi, I think the thinking there was that if you, if you had a qualified candidate from another jurisdiction, then they would be able to get their license even though they didn't have it.
Or like from another state?
Correct, yeah. And part of the thinking there, just to, just to explain, is that we are looking to, to try to cultivate a really diverse candidate pool. And, and, you know, diversity on, on a lot of different dimensions, you know, racial diversity, linguistic diversity, diversity of experience, you know, and there's, there's a limited number of applicants, they're qualified people in, within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and they're, they're very well maybe people that would be, you know, great, that are from other states that would be able to get the license. There's, there's a process that they have to go through with the state to get, to get the licenses, I'm sure you know. But then, yeah, they would, they would be able qualified to apply in that sense.
That's one of the things that I'm looking at this and I'm thinking we are limiting ourselves. The other thing is.
Sorry, and we're limiting ourselves in what sense, sorry?
For applicants, because only specific people are applicants that apply, that meet this requirement, all these requirements.
The licensure?
No, for licensure and for this posting.
I'm just, I'm, in what sense is it limiting? We, we, we brought in the applicant pool by saying that you either need to be licensed or eligible for a license.
Okay. No, I mean, all of these requirements that you're putting in. All these things that you cut from the previous and put in the new ones. I just wonder.
that you cut from the previous and put into the new ones. I just wonder if there are such people, or is this tailor-made to a certain person? I'm going to move on. The next point, under qualification, is master's degree required or doctorate preferred? I think everybody in the state of Massachusetts that has taught for five years has a master's degree. Isn't that still the requirement? So, shouldn't it be doctorate preferred? Don't we want a doctor to be in charge of our school department?
Right, yeah. So it says doctorate preferred there.
But it also says master's required. Why?
Previously, it previously said advanced degree required, and I think we thought that was somewhat ambiguous. But, I mean, are you, are you saying that we should take out the master's degree required and just leave the doctorate preferred?
Or just say doctorate required?
Well, so that would be different than what we're saying. We're saying doctorate preferred. But I see we're, Mr. Kucher is here as well. I think we just want to say hello to the committee, yeah.
Come on in, Glenn.
Perfect timing, Josh.
Come on in.
You can.
Come right up to the table.
Come up to the hot seat.
No, no, he's going to, he's going to, he's going to.
Now, we need you to speak.
Yeah, you can, you can sit right here. No, no, we're, we're.
You're tardy for school.
Welcome.
Yeah, so, member Gailey, you were saying, you were asking whether it should be doctorate preferred or required? Yeah, we, we-
Yeah, doctorate required, actually.
But you were also, you were just saying that you were worried about constricting the pool of eligible applicants, right?
Yeah, but not by their qualifications.
Okay.
Like, like a doctorate compared to a master's degree? Everyone in the state of Massachusetts, after five years of teaching, has a master's degree.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've, we, the previous posting had doctorate preferred, you know, we've had this discussion on the, on the committee for other postings. I think that if we're looking to create as broad a pool as we can, I think the preferred is the way to go. And then if we, not to say that the doctorate is not valuable, but we can evaluate that in the, in the interview and decision-making process in terms of looking for the doctorate, but.
I also agree in qualifications with member Capola that it should be 15 years. I think we should have 15 there. And I have some questions about the committee, the search committee. And when I looked through this list of names and their affiliations, I don't see anyone representing special ed, nor do I see anyone representing regular ed. But I see a teacher representing ESL. So for all equity, I think we should have all of them. Unless there's someone here that I don't know that is special ed or regular ed.
Yeah, so we, we had, when looking for a, trying to line up someone with special education experience, that, that person was unable to commit to the timing. So if the folks have suggestions for a, someone with that particular special education experience, I think we could definitely add them. You know, for the general ed, I think, I think that people on the committee do have experience with general education, so, yeah. Yeah, member Castellanos, yep?
So, so we're going to increase it to the committee itself to 13 now? Because we're going to leave one for special ed, or we're going to try to get someone?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, yeah, yeah. Member Capola?
I'm just wondering, because there was one part here, which I think is really important, preferred fluency in Spanish. But does that also limit us? You know, if someone picks, if we have candidates out there and they don't speak, we haven't had a superintendent in the, you know, past, even in the recent past, that were fluent in Spanish. But are we limiting ourselves by doing that? And I don't remember exactly why, but if you remember last time, when we put in that, the superintendent job posting together, John made a statement about not using a specific, it's like using a second language, you know?
Yeah, no, I, I-
And I understand the reason for Spanish. I'm just, you know, just bringing that point up, because it wasn't that long ago that we did the last application, I'm thinking four years ago. And, you know, John isn't here, but just wondering. I don't remember the legal reason. He felt as though it shouldn't be specific like that. But, you know, to Lorraine's point, that kind of limits us again. If people pick it up and say, well, I don't have it. I have everything else, and, you know, urban and whatever. And I don't have that, that one piece. You know, we've added that in, and, you know, of course, it would be, there's another part here that we have a, yeah, there it is. It's hard to read this thing when it's all, when the lines are all out of it, too. I think it may have been, you know, a multicultural, you know, diverse person. You know, that's great, because I think that's what would be really good. But if, are we limiting people on that, too? Just a concern I have. You know, we hear all the time from the Mass School Association, there aren't a lot of people out here that want this job. So if you're putting things in that are specific to certain people, then where do we go from that?
Yeah.
Are we really limited?
Right. I'm going to just respond to that, and then I, member Pena, then member Magnolia. So I, I think that the way it's worded is that it's the, it's a preference, right? It's preferred. So I think that pretty clearly communicates to candidates that do not speak Spanish. They're, they're, they're not, there's not a bar in them. And they could very well be the, be the right person. But it also communicates what I, I think, I have as a chair of the school committee, which is a preference.
Right.
So, you know, I do think that the reality on the ground of the district has changed, and that it would be preferable and valuable. And I don't think it precludes other qualified candidates from applying. And it may not work out that way, because we're going to take the most qualified candidate we can get, I think. But that, that was the thinking there. And I had, member Pena, then member Magnolia?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I totally like the preference. You know, it's the need of the district. But I don't think that's going to defer anybody from, you know, applying, because it's, it's clear what the qualifications are, you know. But I don't think that, you know, having a preference in the language is going to defer anybody from applying or anything. It has nothing to do with the qualifications. But I, I like that. Me personally, I like that. I think it's a need that the district needs that direction that we need to head into, you know?
And I agree with that. I mean, I'm not saying that, but here's the part that I was saying strongly encourages applicants from multilingual candidates and candidates of color. So we're really putting something out there that's, I see. And so if we do it early, and we have a no response, or a weak response, and we can't come up with somebody, then we're going to be going into, you know, another set of this.
Right.
Coming in spring. That's my only concern, is like, you know, and we hear it all the time from the Mass School Association. You know, you're not going to have a big, you know, pool of people. So if we don't have a big pool of people, we don't, what happens to us?
Yeah, yeah. So I know I have member Magnolia next, but I just want to respond to that. I think that it's, again, encouraging, the other sentence you mentioned is encouraging people to apply.
Encourage. Can we use encourage rather than preferred?
I mean, I, I, I think that I'm communicating that I have a preference for there to be Spanish language fluency. That, I don't think what, the sentence you just pointed to, I don't think they're necessarily saying the same thing. In that, in that sentence you mentioned at the top, we're encouraging candidates of color to apply. And I think the rationale there, and we worked with our, the city's diversity, equity, inclusion officer on that, who I think could add to this if we'd like. But the rationale there is that historically, you know, institutions have not always created a welcoming environment for people of color. And communicating that right off the bat sends a really strong message. And it's not a message that other candidates shouldn't apply, but it's reaching out to those candidates who might feel marginalized, that we really want them to apply. And I think that's sort of a, it's doing different work than the preference about the person's skills that are in the skills section. So that was the thinking there. And I had, I had member Magnolia as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a quick word about doctorates, which is that if somebody holds a PhD, which is a doctorate of theory, and knowing that we will have candidates with EDDs, which are doctorates of praxis, you, to say master's required, doctorate preferred, I think is the perfect language, because we could have candidates with CAGs, certificates of Ed Grant's graduate study, that would be equally as qualified. I mean, I can sit here and wax philosophical about magical realism, which I wrote 238 pages on. It's not going to help my work on the school committee. So the same thing is true for the next superintendent, right? You could have a candidate with a PhD who knows everything there is to know about a specific flatworm. That's not going to make them a better superintendent than somebody who maybe has a CAGs. So I think the wording right here is, is right on. But I want to say something about the preferred fluency in Spanish, having recently gone through a very large search for a president. And that is, it is very easy, if one does not check a box in the candidates for diversity, to think that something is worded in such a way to encourage candidates of diversity. And those of us who don't check those boxes have to be better listeners to folks' recommendations, who are saying, this is welcoming language. And so I am going to defer to our DEI officer here and say that the terminology, preferred fluency in Spanish, is something that is going to encourage candidates to apply, who have that as their specific skill set. And also, maybe they have a master's degree. So to my mind, that combination, it does widen our pool as wide as it can be and should be. And I just want to endorse it.
Thank you. Member Gailey?
I would like to add to that. If we need to be specific, so it should be doctorate in education. You want to be specific about the doctorate?
Mr. Kucher, you want to weigh in on that?
At the risk of offending everyone, the only thing more overrated than lobster is, is an EDD. It's an important credential, and I respect the people who have it. But I, I'm not sure that it makes a whole lot of difference. I think what you have here is sufficient to attract the people you're looking for. I think there are people who are not proficient in Spanish, who would still apply, because they always do. And good people always do that. I don't know whether that's an answer specifically to your question, but, you know, there are people who possess advanced degrees in the sciences, who teach science. And their advanced degrees are in the science itself, as opposed to in the field of educational theory, or policy, or practice, whatever it might be. So I don't see that as a significant credential. I think that the search committee and the school committee should review the resumes and backgrounds in depth, and make a judgment about how appropriate they feel that candidate is for this position in Lynn at this time. Maybe take a look at the transcript and see what they, what they think would relate well to Lynn.
Can I also give a perspective?
Please.
So I've been in Lynn a long time, and wanted to get my doctorate. Actually started the process three different times. But it never came to fruition for a few reasons. One, professionally, I went to Harrington as Level Four, then I went to Ford. That was, that was the first time I started an application. But then, once I was at Harrington doing Level Four work, I didn't have time to do a doctorate. Then the second time, after being at Harrington for a while, and things started settling, I went to Ford for half a year. I was doing two schools simultaneously. Couldn't do it then either, so I had to stop the process. And then the third time, it was a family obligation. Financially, I was paying for college for my children, so I couldn't do it. So the perspective I want to bring to the table is it doesn't always fit in people's financials to do it, or time to do it, because of a variety of reasons. I personally, 37 years in education, think that I bring a lot to the table without a doctorate. So it's just a different perspective to think about.
That's like four PhDs, if you ask.
Member Pena?
Yeah. Understanding where we're trying to broaden the search, I totally agree with the language here, you know, and being open to go in other states, and preferably, you know, bringing a candidate who doesn't have a, you know, a doctorate to apply for the doctorate. I think this is, I support this language. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Member Magnolia?
I would just like to hear from Mr. Kucher about the process, since we skipped over that. Is that an appropriate time to ask him to talk about it?
We started to talk about the process a little bit. But did you want to say a few words, or could you please say a few words, Mr. Kucher, about what we should expect for the process for the next couple of months?
Starting almost immediately, we will be working with whoever's designated to the search committee, to get the search committee ready for their responsibilities. That will include an orientation, a briefing on the process itself, some guidance on how to look at application packages, and how to look at resumes, some information on the importance of identifying diversity and equity in the, and inclusion in the application process to make sure that a diverse pool of candidates is respectfully recruited. We will then, at the same time, be distributing electronically, and making phone calls, and doing other things to recruit the largest possible pool of candidates that we can find. I did share with the mayor's office, the list of schools, organizations, and agencies that we deal with, particularly around the issues of diversity, in addition to the 1,300-person distribution list of candidates that will go out. The position will be immediately posted on our website. It will be on the Superintendent's Association website. We will distribute it to the National Alliance of Superintendent Searchers, who are the National School Boards Association Superintendent Searchers in the states, and also to the recently formed Coalition of State School Board Associations, which is sort of an alternate group to the National School Boards Association, where we all work together as Superintendent Searchers to share information. The applications will be coming to us. We will review them. All of the applications will be available to the search committee if they wish to review them. We will be recommending to the search committee the candidates which, whom we believe would be the most appropriate to interview. The search committee will be working on what I believe will be a very solid group of interview questions, to provide a very diligent challenge to the candidates who want to be your superintendents. We'll be doing some preliminary reference checking in the meantime. And the search committee will begin the process of inviting candidates to interview. Then the search committee will recommend to the school committee those people who it believes are most appropriate to go to the next stage, which is a totally public stage. Once the recommendations of the search committee are presented to the school committee, everything that follows is public. So I expect that we'll be working with the, the mayor's office and the school department to create an opportunity for those finalists to meet with the community, to be interviewed by members of the community at whatever settings are appropriate, meet with the faculty, meet with community leaders, spend a day or two in Lynn. And then the school committee can do its deliberation and its additional referencing. There's no shortage of people in Lynn who will be eager to help you with your search, whether you want it or not. So we'll be advising the office of the mayor on protocols for dealing with those people who wish to provide additional help. Just so that you understand, we do not talk to the media unless you ask us to. We refer all calls to the chair of the search committee, who would be the mayor, and I suspect there'll be some of them as well. If there are any specific questions about the process itself, I'll be happy to respond to them as best I can.
Member Dugan, Member Magnolia.
So Glenn, we've never met before. Eric Dugan, I'm new. Thank you for coming tonight. You mentioned reference checking, so would that be your organization? Does that come to the school committee, the search committee? Where does that?
We do some of the preliminary reference checking. Remember, the candidates will be applying in confidence.
Okay.
So we really can't go to everybody we'd like to go to, because some of the candidates don't want their candidacy public until it's a finalist stage.
Absolutely.
And then at the final stage, the school committee would, would...
So that would be on our...
Do some site visits.
Absolutely.
Do some checking of their own, if they wish. I did not mention that we would be scheduling meetings with the community prior to the candidates being selected, focus group discussions with the community. Several years ago, we did a bunch of them in Lynn. They were very instructive. We also put together some online surveys, which can easily be done in several languages, and gather those results, and aggregate the results, and present a focus group report to the search committee and to the school committee.
Great. Thank you very much.
I will tell you that the online surveys tend to be 10 to 15 times larger than the focus groups. For whatever reason, and there are several that I could come up with, people, most adults are really busy during the day and don't want to go to another meeting at night. So the opportunity to do a virtual focus group in addition to a live focus group and completing online surveys can be attractive to some people. You have to do the live focus groups, particularly with the faculty and with the community, because people want an opportunity to come out, and they want an opportunity to see themselves being heard, and we respect that. But we also find that we get 10 to 15 times as many responders online, and probably three or four more times by virtual communication. So we'll schedule a mix of them in collaboration with the mayor's office, and have that feedback for you. I would also say this. You may be contacted by candidates or by people who wish to be the superintendent or know someone who would like to be the superintendent. Those communications are not inappropriate if you're encouraging them to apply. Candidates are, especially candidates who are not from the metropolitan Boston area, are going to want to know, "Why is the position vacant?" Well, you're superintendent, you know, left under very good circumstances, and for him, and they're going to want to know what the district is like. And this is a good urban district with a good reputation. The community has a good reputation. The community has an unusually good reputation with what I would say welcoming the stranger. I think we picked this up in the last theory. There were people who, I think a lot of people came to Lynn originally from someplace else, and then the city has been a host to people who've migrated into Lynn, and people who've migrated in spoke very highly of the community. You don't always see that. So the community will be an encouraging one. They're going to want to know what the area is like, and culturally, and economically, and, and in a whole bunch of ways, except for real estate values. This is a terrific country to be from, but most of us can't afford to buy our houses from ourselves, and that, you know, can be a challenge. They will also want to know what the school committee is like, and the school committee's on television. They can watch you, and it's, and I think people will welcome that opportunity. They may ask some questions about, you know, "Who am I competing with?" And I think what you send to people with this brochure is that you're competing with a very large pool of diverse applicants. You're not competing with a small selection of people who have been selected, and the search is genuinely open.
The brochure...
The brochure. Oh, excuse me. What I'm holding in my hand is a mock-up of what a brochure would look like for Lynn. It includes the, maybe there are some edits that you're still going to make, I don't know, but includes the latest of what we had, and our graphic designer finished this this morning. It will be distributed electronically. But, yeah, for sure, this is, if you want this. I brought 20 of them. Well, here you go. Take these two. We produce these in-house, and most districts that do their recruiting electronically still like to have a handful. Remember, these are drafts, so please consider them as drafts. They like the opportunity to have something that they can distribute, maybe at the central office, or if some of you go into meetings. But what you'd see online would simply be a streaming of the four pages. And this will go out to a very wide body of candidates and people who know people who would be interested. This, this language should look very familiar to you, because it's, it's the language that you've forwarded to us. Your economic package is on the generous side, so I don't think, I think you'll find that very encouraging to candidates.
Yes. Well, thank you. Member Magnolia.
This is a super nitpicky question, but who is responsible for vetting the, either the finalist candidates or the candidates prior to being finalist licensure and academic credentials? Because these have been issues when you see some of the big, high-profile superintendent stuff. So I just want to know.
We tend, we tend to know who these people, who the candidates are.
Okay.
So in most cases, we certainly want to check the validity of the credentials. We want to make sure the candidates are who they are.
Mm-hmm.
That's the easy part. What you want to find is, at some point, once the candidates are public, you want to begin the work on doing some of the deep referencing, and that would include talking to immediate supervisors, colleagues, other people who know them. Certainly, there's, there's a social media search. The problem with social media is it's very risky, and not everything on it is accurate. There are candidates out there who have, through acts of courage, or because they did the right thing rather than the popular thing, might have some people out there that don't like them. Now, I don't know how many of you are educators, but I can sense that any of you who are principals or have been a central office administrators may, in your lives, have suspended a student from school, coached someone out of the profession, said no to a parent, a demanding parent, and you can expect that those people are Googling you once a week to find out where you are, so that they can warn the school committee that Satan sent you to Lynn, and you shouldn't hire these people. And there are a number of very good candidates, very good candidates, whose Google is unflattering through no fault of their own. So we try to do, we try to clear that, but there's, there's no way around it. And unfortunately, it's all public, and while there are things that we can't ask and we can't report on, the media, for example, is unrestricted. They can look at anything. They can ask a candidate, "How old are you?" They can ask, "We heard you've been arrested and convicted of something," and you can't always ask that question. They can ask family questions. They can ask other questions that just are inappropriate for employment interviews in the public sector. So we are very cautious about this, and we do worry that a candidate could emerge who's got some unfavorable and unflattering things in their background that could disqualify them. So we want to make sure that we can all do our due diligence to discover that. I mean, I'd be happy to speak in depth. If you wanted to call me, I could give you some, some of our stories that we've...
That's quite all right. I was mostly thinking of people who said that their license was current, or they were in process, and actually weren't. There've been some high-profile superintendents where there's been some, a little bit of fibbing on degrees and, and things like that. So that's, I just wanted to see whose job that was to check those things.
Well, initially, that would be ours.
Okay.
To confirm that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Ultimately, it would be a collaboration between us and the school committee as we work out the final vetting profiles.
Any other questions? Member Magnolia?
If this is the appropriate time, I'd like to move that we accept the posting for the superintendent position.
Okay. One second now.
One second.
Any other debate? Roll call.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Kucher.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will be in touch with your office almost immediately to start scheduling dates for the next steps.
Terrific. Yep, yep. We appreciate all your help. Thank you to all the committee for sharing the helpful comments and questions today and, you know, build up here, and for all the work we're going to do together. And I also just want to thank my team, particularly Dana Smith and Fosse Dana Claviss for your help with this. So thank you, everyone. Excited for this process. Okay. All right. Next on the agenda is the vote to authorize the signing of an MOU between the city and the school department for benefits position in human resources. So I just wanted to say a couple things about that before we get started.
After you, I have a question.
Okay. Yep, yep. So we are, before you, in your packet, there's a MOU, which is a contract between the city and the school department about a position that would be in the city, and it's an administrative position, and the rationale for it is that we believe that there is a, a gap systemically in our approach to administering benefits that's creating personnel issues that's been building up over, over several years, and it's really not a gap we see in any, in the work of any individual or in the, in the work of any group of individuals. We see it as a gap in the way that we have our system structured in terms of the administration of the benefits. And it is, it is having consequences, and so we do feel like we need to address it. There's, there's folks that are not able to get the coverage that they're entitled to because they aren't getting offered their insurance in the right moment, people who end up having to owe money to the city for issues with premium billing, and this is compounded over the years just because the Affordable Care Act. So it's created issues where there's lack of compliance with the Affordable Care Act regulations, which generates fines with the federal government. The city works very hard to address those fines and has successfully reduced, you know, what could have been multimillion-dollar fines into, into a much lower number, but that is still an expense that the city is incurring. And so the city, the approach so far to try to manage this has been that the city's sort of doing audits on an occurring basis and monitoring, you know, trying to sort of come up with a stopgap for the administration of the program, and it's just not sustainable. And so we think having an administrative position to address it would be advisable. You know, we, again, we believe it's not, it's not taking away anyone's into work. It's not a reflection on anyone's work. We understand that there are questions there, and so we're trying to work to make that clear in the, in the MOA. It's on the city's side. I think it's, it's, you know, might be helpful context to point out that the way, you know, Chapter 70 in net school spending works, there's, there's a lot of positions that are, or there is a number of positions that are on the city's side that are devoted to school purposes and therefore paid for under Chapter 70. I mean, the insurance itself is administered by the city, and the portion of the insurance that's for the benefit of school employees is therefore charged that way. And a lot of other cities do, do this, have a position on the city's side. People de lowe revere, I think, are some of the examples. So, you know, we do think this is important, and we're particularly worried about the timing of it, given the wave of new hires that are coming up with the, sort of, almost 300 employees that are enrolling their, in their benefits this, this month. So we believe it's time-sensitive, but we, you know, we understand that there, we, we want to get to a point where we address questions and concerns that have been raised. Member Castellanos?
Thank you, Mayor Nicholson, for providing that overview and insight. I also want to thank President Giamano from 1736 for tonight's open-mic remarks. It was very insightful. I do agree that this is a time-sensitive position. I know we have a pretty, we've identified a date that we need to really get someone in there to do this work, but I also believe that we need to also just make sure that we collaborate with folks who are going to be impacted by this. And I believe 1736, and I know everyone's working to clean this up and work together to, to get to this common ground, and I, and I just, I know we're bargaining right now with 1736. We meet on Tuesday of next week. I, I do recommend we table this until we set up a special meeting for that Wednesday, just so folks could gather their foot in to just go over some of the questions. I think there's membership, too, from 1736 that want to still weigh in on it. I think they do see the significance and importance of this position. I know there's been talks and conversations amongst leadership to, to get this done. I believe that we can get this done to, to find a resolution. I just would like to make the motion to, to table this until we could gather some, some time to make sure that we, we do this the correct way. And I, just keep in mind, it is a time-sensitive decision. I do, I apologize to the members. I, I do want to propose a special meeting for next week, but that would be my motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
No.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. So then, we'll meet at September 14th, Wednesday, September 14th, at 7:30.
Eight?
Yeah.
City Hall.
More room, huh?
Let me do my office. Yep.
If I can't make it, is that okay?
Yeah.
What was it? Six thirty?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Seventeen fourteen.
Yep. Next on the agenda is the American Red Cross Facilities Agreement for Marshall Middle School. Superintendent?
I met with Rich Downey from the Fire Department to talk about emergency shelter, if, should there be an emergency in the city. My understanding is that both Marshall and Classical were voted on as emergency shelters in the past, at past school committee meetings. He brought to me this facility use agreement with the Red Cross, asking me, I believe it's a fairly new document. It's not a document that I believe was done in the past. So I'm being asked to fill this out and sign it so that Red Cross can utilize those two buildings should there be an emergency. He assured me that they try very hard not to have to utilize the building unless there's, like, 30 or more people that are... utilize the building unless there's like 30 or more people that are impacted by, it could be a large fire, it could be, you know, a hurricane issue, things like that. Things that they need a place for people to go. So I'm just looking for permission to complete this and sign it so that those buildings can be utilized as emergency response shelters.
Questions, Member Capola?
Just storage of supplies. Is there, is this a, you know, like, it would be left there all the time or just when they come in on the use of the building?
I asked the same question because we don't have a lot of space for supplies. And I actually used Marshall as an example. They would be looking at the gym and the cafeteria because it can be closed off from the rest of the school. And the supplies would be for only what is needed for, while they're there.
Okay.
Would not be left for a long period of time.
Okay. My only other question is, they, it got into the food service. So, you know, if something happens on the weekend, what arrangements have we made with, you know, our cafeteria?
We would have to talk to, yeah. We typically call.
Call them in, okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to move that we approve this.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penya?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Next on the agenda is any votes taken in the policy subcommittee meeting.
So there was a vote for us to table the conversation so the committee could make appropriate adjustments to the.
Do we want to entertain a motion to take the agenda out of order to move up the Section 9?
So moved.
So moved, baby.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Say, Lieutenant Regerio?
So, as I said earlier, anyone who knows me knows I love inspirational sayings. They're everywhere in my life. So I'm going to start with that. When shifts and transitions in life shake you to the core, see that as a sign of greatness that's about to occur. It's a quote by Martha Beck, "Growing Wings, the Power of Change." Transition is hard at times and can be messy. Our district has been adjusting to many transitions this summer and into this coming school year. Transitions in leadership, both at the district level and school level. Transition with our student information system, moving from e-school to power school. Transition to new curriculum resources in ELA and math. And transition of new staff and the critical shortage of educators and staff that all educational institutions are dealing with right now. Transitions can also be a sign of new beginnings and an opportunity to strengthen our systems and get feedback on what works and what does not work. The theme of this 2223 school year will be juntos logramos, together we achieve. Our school year began yesterday with excitement and ease, showing the incredible amount of preparation and work that our school leaders, teachers, and staff put into preparing for our opening of the new school year. Much of our launch will focus on helping students acclimate to returning to school and classroom routines while building strong relationships with their teachers and peers. We will also continue to set a rhythm of outreach and partnership with families, beginning on, building on the success of those elements from past years. We have only just begun, but have started on the right pathway for a successful school year. Lynn Public Schools families received a welcome letter from me outlining, outlining the theme of our work with them this year and beyond. The theme juntos logramos, together we achieve, is not a new path or direction. It's a message of teamwork in building strong relationships and a solid foundation of work together while continuing a thoughtful and strategic set of initiatives and activities aligned to our district's strategic plan that are designed to meet our students' needs. With every new school year, there are successes and challenges. One of our challenges has been around the staffing of our open positions across our schools and departments. We continue to have openings that need to be filled. And our Human Resources Department, along with our school and district leaders, have been working all summer, searching, interviewing, and hiring staff for their schools and departments. Our team continues to work diligently to find avenues to recruit staff to fill these positions. To date, we have four clerical positions, three nursing positions, 43 classroom positions, and 69 specialist positions. And I've laid out in detail what those positions are, still to staff. We are thinking creatively in our recruitment efforts, tapping into local colleges and universities, some of our retired educators, as well as incentivizing placement of our current non-classroom staff to ensure that our classroom positions are safely covered. Another challenge has been our transition from e-school to power school as our new student information system. Thank you to the data center who has been working countless hours with the power school consultants all summer for this transition. Unfortunately, this process delayed the typical communication strategies that schools use to share information to families, as well as delayed the schools in getting their students' schedules finalized and our online platforms ready for use for the opening of school. A special thank you to the many staff who stepped up and continue to step up, working overtime, to get the correct information into the system, to have schedules and online systems ready for our students to access. As we move onward this year, we'll be, this year will be all about strengthening our foundation. We will take what we have been working on together to create the bedrock that can be built upon into the future. We learn from each other, and our best work is created when we work together. Together, we continue to challenge ourselves without judgment. To meet our students' needs, we need to push our thinking around our equity work and push ourselves to identify what systems are preventing our district from offering equitable experiences for all. We commit to our English learners by utilizing our strategies for English learner PD. We continue to come into awareness about how equity lives in our work and our lives through our Hope and Healing PD. And we, more and more of us, explore blended learning model while even, while some even move on to become distinguished mentors. We will continue our reflection and professional work by completing the last two quarters, although we may adjust that, we're having conversations, of Hope and Healing PD. And we will continue offering blended learning modules for those who are interested. And we'll continue working together this year on lesson planning that is grounded and focused on how we support our most underserved students, our students with disabilities, and our multilingual learners. One success to note during this school year, this opening, is the excitement of the opening of the first-ever early college high school at North Shore Community College. Lynn Public Schools and North Shore Community College are thrilled to be able to offer such a wonderful opportunity to our students and look forward to planning together the expansion of this program. Lynn Public Schools has, was also awarded the 21st Century Grant for three programs in our schools. Campfire of North Shore will add a third school to work, to work, to do and offer students from hood school after-school programming. Also, Leap for Education will continue their work with the Dream More Program at Thurgood Marshall, as well as expanding that program to Lynn English for, for a teen center after-school, supported in part with the 21st Century Grant funds as well. We continue to investigate other opportunities to support our students and families around additional after-school programs. We, as a collective team, will learn together and fortify the solid foundation that our students need and deserve. This year will primarily be about creating the systems and supports that we have been missing. Uniform systems will move us all toward the same goal while including and elevating teacher, staff, students, and families in the process. We need to provide our teachers and staff with the space and autonomy to do what they do best, utilize their strengths daily to create and elevate student learning.
Included with my superintendent report, I have given you a draft. It will be a living document, basically, this year. We'll add to it. But this is the school committee look ahead for the year. And we'll show some of the presentations we will do, some, some of the subcommittee work that we already have in the plans, and some topics with the superintendent's report. And I will update this as the year goes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Member Castellanos?
Superintendent Regerio, I want to say thank you for your communication and report. Very adept. We really appreciate the transparency and what you, what you're putting on there. I wanted to give a quick plug and a thank you to showing up to Leap for Education's Dream More Summer Program. I got to take part in a summer opportunity with some of the colleagues from the school committee and some of the leaders down in the, in the district. And we got to go see what Dream More is doing. Leap for Education is doing a lot of fantastic work. I know Gary Torres was actually part of the Dream More Program. It was inspiring to see the student and teacher and staff engagement. And it was so rewarding to, to see the, the expansion into the high school because you had students and, and folks who volunteered during the summer who were social workers who are now, they were, they were at the Dream More Program, now will be at the high school level. So, and we got to hear from students who really, it didn't feel like I was talking to a student. Like I was, felt like I was talking to an adult. And it was actually very, it was very inspiring. And I'm, I'm just very grateful for Leap. I'm very grateful for the other 21st Century Grant programs that we have. I know Campfire. And also, you know, we have Girls Inc. And there's so many just partnerships in this district that we rely on to get these students to reach that student success that we all want them to. And it's kind of, it goes back to it takes a village. And I'm grateful for folks in this room to, that they actually take the, the time to, to recognize the folks involved in the, in the operation. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Member Gailey.
I also want to thank you for that new program. I went with Mr. Castellanos, and it was very impressive. And I was very supportive of putting it up into the high school for a teen center. The students clarified and let us know how important that was. And it was really important to see. I've been very aware of the work that Campfire and North Shore has done. And I'm sure that hood school, the parents at hood school are thrilled to be getting an after-school program. And I really hope that we continue to get after-school programs to help students with studying, learning the curriculum, parents to learn the curriculum. And thank you, thank you for that opportunity of me to go in your tent. It was really impressive.
Member Penya?
Thank you, Superintendent Deb. That was so robust. Thank you. No, I'm just kidding, just joking. But I really liked the juntos logramos. That sends a great message out there, you know, of teamwork. And I like the direction that we're having. I really, really appreciate that. Just to echo what Brian was saying, the Leap program was really, really good down at Marshall School. And, you know, getting those grants, that's, that's really good. I'm excited to see the work that we're going to put together. And, but I really, really want to echo on that, juntos logramos. That sends a great teamwork message. And I, that just touches me. That's my new theme, juntos logramos.
That's the theme this year, so. That is the theme.
Thank you. Member Magnolia?
Thank you for the update, Superintendent. I, I had a question about the intersection of the data center, the information programming. I, I just closed my thing.
Student information.
Yes, exactly. With the lack of classroom teachers, I happen to have my child who was affected with the, there was no classroom teacher for you, but you're in this room kind of thing. And the first couple of days have been a little bit chaotic as kids move into and out of classrooms at, at her school. And I, I was just sort of wondering if there was a plan for those classrooms who've had someone come in to take them because there wasn't a classroom teacher there. This is an elementary school. In terms of communications with parents about who that lead is, and one of my recommendations would, would be that a, a communication goes out to the parents in those schools who have folks that are maybe, like a specialist that's in as, as a classroom teacher because they don't have a classroom teacher. And here's the reason why I'm, I'm sort of suggesting this. For kids who got through the pandemic just fine, this is not a big deal. This kind of like slight chaos is entertainment for the first couple of days of school. But for kids who didn't come through the pandemic fine, this, like, school's supposed to be the safe place where everything is kind of predictable. And even just an additional communication home to parents to say, hey, your kid happens to be in a room where we're still looking for somebody. And so there might be a couple different, you know, folks that are taking the classroom. We understand this. This is totally normal. I think the social and emotional part that, you know, you were talking about with the PD, I, I'd just like to see us extended out to families to kind of reassure them that there are people in charge of this. Just because we're in a moment of transition doesn't mean we don't know that we're in a moment of transition. Because sometimes I wish that, like, parents could read your superintendent's report. Like, I feel like it would be really reassuring to them. So if some version of that could go to the schools where there aren't classroom teachers that are going to be consistent, I think that would go a long way to reassuring. Obviously, I'm in a unique position as a member of the school committee to kind of ask questions of folks that other parents might not even know to ask. So a preemptive dissemination of both information but also reassurance, I think, would be super useful, especially if it went out at the beginning of next week. Everyone's kind of assuming this week to be a little bit chaotic. But if things haven't settled down by next week, I, I think it would mean a lot.
I just want to assure you, I agree with you 100%. I think we really were scrambling at every level, the school level, the district level, trying to come up with creative ways that we could make sure that classrooms were not chaotic. Our expectation is that any non-classroom teacher, if there is a classroom that needs a teacher, that a teacher, one teacher, would be put into that classroom until we are able to hire someone. We've worked with the teachers' union on some agreements that I'll be sharing later. But acknowledging that we're asking teachers to leave positions that they own to do something else. And so we are incentivizing that to some extent. But the goal is to keep consistency for our children. So I'm sorry if that was the experience so far, but that will be corrected.
Yeah. And I, I think sometimes just parents knowing that, that this intersection of the data center and the teachers is likely why it was a little, it felt a little bit more chaotic. And I think it's easy for those of us with information to understand that. But, you know, as a parent, I get the communication. So I listen to your voicemail. I read it. I got a text, you know, every single way it could come. But when you have a specific kid in, in a class that's affected by that, particularly in the elementary grades, just a little bit more of a personal reassurance from the principal to say, your, your child is in a class and has one classroom teacher, but their classroom teacher might change throughout the course of this year. Just so something small like that makes such a difference. And it really does help build community too, because of the principal reaching out to the parents.
I will. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Member Gailey?
I just want to piggyback on Dr. Magnolia. And one thing that I would like you to look into, if we possibly do that, is that we are, we don't have custodians in some of our schools, and we need those custodians in our schools. I'm not sure if that's definite, but if it is, it's very concerning. And I would like to have it on the next agenda. Thank you, ma'am. That's all I'm saying.
Any other questions?
All right. We're looking for a motion to go into executive session to, and then we'll have to state the reasons on the motion.
Motion to go to executive session, discuss strategies with respect to collective bargaining relative to nurses, Local 3147A.
Second.
We'll have to do all of them, I think.
As well as the minutes.
Oh, sorry. And discussions, and ratification of votes taken.
And discussion, and ratification of votes taken in exec. No, I'm sorry, that's, I missed it. I gotta put my glasses on. Second, put the glasses on. All right. And then request for executive session to approve executive session minutes from August 29th, 2022.
And then non-union personnel.
And then non-union personnel, yes.
You have to read the discussion of these matters, which involves.
Discussion of these matters involves detrimental effect on and involves strategy in an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect.
There you go.
In an open meeting. Thank you.
Excellent. May it be seconded. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
That was a tough one. Yes.
Member Gailey? Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we return to regular session.
Any second? Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. Looking for a motion to approve the amendment for, to add professional development days for nurses, Local 3147A.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes. I'm signing the second copy now.
Oh, we gotta sign.
It's a lucky pen. It's called the Mr. Ratification Pen.
See no further business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.